Financial community meeting for June 9, 2025. We have a few resolutions, the first of which is temporary resolution 54-25, a resolution appointing four of the initial members to the Board of the Lancaster New Community Authority and declaring an emergency coming from Economic Development Committee and Councilman Hope.
Thank you. I'm not sure, are we just discussing names now?
Maybe the law director might have some comments.
Sure. Yeah, I got, I got a list of names and luckily there were four who weren't going to have any conflicts and who were willing to serve the city in this capacity. So I'm gonna read those off. I'm assuming nobody will have any objections and then, you know, if you'd like, you can, you can take a vote on that and make a decision. But first off is Lindy Jackson. I think everybody's familiar with Lindy, former service safety director, serves the community at a lot of different roles and said he'd be willing to serve as one of the formational board members for the NCA. And then we have with us tonight, Mr. Jan Kocja, who also serves on the Planning Commission. And Jan was approached and it indicated that he would be willing to serve in that capacity as well. Lisa McKenzie is the county recorder. We have to have a local government representative and it can't be somebody that works for the city of Lancaster. So obviously the county is the next best choice and Lisa has volunteered to, to take on that role for us. And then also, you all know Matt Nyheiser, former councilman from the 5th Ward. Matt's currently the city manager for Baltimore, but he indicated that he would be willing to serve on the formational board as well. So those are the folks, those are the names that I got that didn't have conflicts that were created by their positions on other city boards or their day jobs or something like that. And I think it's a great slate of, of individuals, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. So that's gotta be one reading because of the date, I think we have 45 days from when we formed it.
Yep.
Which would have put us before the next committee meeting. My second is Mrs. Kreitz.
Perfect. Any comments from the council? Yay, nay, or whatever?
Just for clarification, so when we read that, ask for suspension, is she just including the names in that or how do we wanna?
I'm sorry, Anita can just go ahead and write those in and then it will be in writing, done prior to council's official meeting and vote. So she just needs to write them in right now and then if you all wanna, you know, make a note on your own legislation.
There's a star.
Nope.
We'll just do it as normal.
Nope, I left them blank because I knew they were gonna have to be filled in.
Yep, thanks.
So in the event, all of a sudden, another name pops up, but what's being presented is the list of four people.
Correct.
So we would have to vote on those four people if it happened to be a fifth or sixth name. I assume that's-
If nobody is objecting now, I guess I assumed that we were going to have this conversation now rather than during council. If anybody has an objection, please feel free to register that.
Are any of them gonna be here so we can ask some questions, introduce themselves?
Well, Jan's here, obviously. I mentioned that, but I think we're all familiar with everybody else and this was kind of a last minute thing unfortunately because of the timing. So I don't think it was really fair to ask any of them to show up and, you know, put on a, a dog and pony show when we all know that what their credentials are essentially.
Yep, I just wanna clarify that in case there is a change because you're, you're doing an official slate, so.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Next is temporary resolution 55-25, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Mark and Beth Powers for parcel number 0140112500, 040101500, 01401, 04200, excuse me, and 0140112300, consisting of 143.319 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency, also coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Hope.
Thank you. This is a pre-annexation by Rock Mill Industrial Park and Stephanie Bosco's here to explain why we had no map and what exactly was going on.
Well, I'm gonna give you guys some background on why we're proposing to annex this property and I've been in conversation with Mark Powers for years to try, I know he's been very interested in selling his property. This is adjacent to the Rock Mill Industrial Park, so our plan has been to market it as advanced manufacturing. And so we were in the process of planning this out a little bit more smoothly, but we have a prospective user right now. So this is a, a foreign company that is coming in to manufacture oil immersed machinery and equipment for the gas and oil industry. I'm gonna get my notes out so I say everything properly. So they manufacture transformers that are commonly used in power distribution and industrial applications. They are looking to make $400 million of investment in North America. They are looking, the phase one is manufacturing, it'll be two facilities, about 27 million in investment and they are committing to 75 jobs at this point. They, they're always very conservative when they make these commitments to the state because the state will claw back if necessary, so they want to be really conservative, but we're, they are hoping that it'll expand and it'll be over 75 jobs in the future. So that was the reason why we're moving quickly on annexing this property. The whole site is 105 acres and this includes 40 acres that the Port Authority owns. So we've been marketing it together and the plan is to make it advanced manufacturing as it's right there in the Rock Mill Industrial Park. In terms of what's going on with today's legislation, and I may turn this over to Stephanie Hall at some point, but the properties are, the two largest properties that Mark Powers owns are bisected by the bypass. And so that has made it a little more complicated, but the county has encouraged us to go ahead and submit the pre-annexation and that they will help us, they will, they will review it in more depth and the plan is to approve the annexation. Did I get all of that right, Stephanie?
Close. As I said in the email I sent out today, it's not up to us, none of these things are up to the city, but the county has graciously agreed, as Stephanie said, to look at the petitioners, pre-annexa, or the petitioners petition for annexation, sorry, and make a decision about how they feel this should be handled. Like I said, there are several different aspects that go into it and so they're going to have to sit down and have a conversation about how they want to, to work those out. But we do appreciate that they're willing to do that so quickly. The one thing that's holding it up is they have to be able to file the petition and in order to be able to file the petition, they, we have to have a pre-annexation agreement in place. So we're just waiting to get this pre-annexation agreement done and then we're gonna have the petitioner put, give their petition to the county and then the county has said that they will, you know, work on straightening it out just as quickly as they possibly can to allow the, the annexation to go forward. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer those.
We're talking about 143 acres and this, this foreign entity is gonna purchase, is looking to purchase 100 acres. Will that leave the access, good access to the remaining 43 acres for potential future buyers?
Sure. So it's about 65 on one side of the bypass and about 65 on the other side of the bypass. The 65 on the east side of the bypass, so right in Rock Mill, is adjacent to 40 acres of Port Authority property. We have packaged that as 105 acres.
Okay.
There's the additional 65 on the other side, which will be available for additional industrial development.
Easy access from Wilson?
Absolutely. Yep.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, so that's gonna be one reading and Mr. Wing is gonna be my second.
Very good. Thank you, Stephanie. Good report. Any other questions? She walked away, but I think we're comfortable with this. Moving on to temporary resolution 56-25, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and the mint certificate of appropriation with the county auditor and the Stormwater Fund 6006 for payment of compensation time coming from Water, Water Protection Control, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually a pretty simple resolution. It just increases the overtime line item in the 6006 fund by $2,500. I'll let Stephen offer some more explanation, but it was just simply because a retirement payout was higher than expected.
Thank you, councilman. Good evening, everybody. So yeah, I sent the email, of course, on Friday with the long version of the background of this legislation, but the short version is that, yeah, I had an oversight and just didn't budget enough or budget the amount that I typically would to cover me for an entire year, once you took out the retirement payout for administrative assistant who retired in January and again, just looking to have that increased to about $2,500 to make sure we can be covered the rest of the year if any overtime is needed.
My understanding is we'll, we'll do this for two readings, because I think we have to be compliant with the auditor's office by the end of the month. And Councilman Peter will be my second.
Any other questions from council? Very good, thank you. Since you're up there, you might as well stay there.
Yeah.
And temporary resolution 57-25, a resolution to authorize the service safety director to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into an agreement to purchase TimeCo Model 600 Street Sweeper from the State Cooperative Purchasing Program for use by the Stormwater and Transportation Departments, again, coming from Water, Wastewater, or Water Protection Control Committee, Councilman Wing.
Thank you. Again, you got more of the detailed specifics on the Friday email, but again, for this one here, we're just looking to replace our, one of our oldest of the two street sweepers we have and need this legislation in order to do that. Happy to answer any questions as usual if anybody has any.
Sure. And you have the funds to purchase this outright instead of-
I do, yes. I have the funds to purchase this outright. The previous street sweepers we've acquired have been through a lease, but instead of paying that off and the interest on that and having to go through a lease agreement and all that, we've, again, I'm able to just purchase it outright, so that's my plan here.
Yes, and trade in the other one, I think reading $60,000.
Correct, yes, $60,000 and then the remaining funds that we would owe, it would be like 337-ish thousand for the new street sweeper.
All right. Councilman Ailes, we may second.
Sure.
And then I believe there's a limit, or there's a timeframe for this quote and getting this in on time, so that's why I run-
So, yeah, I was kindly asking, or humbly asking, two readings if council would be open to it, again, with the reasoning there, that the, we already have, we've been told that even if we were to place the order now, it would be a nine-month wait, so obviously we have a while until we're gonna get the street sweeper, but it is on a first come, first served basis. So if in the three weeks between what will be the second reading, the third reading, somebody comes in with an order, you know, that, that wait time could be pushed back, you know, weeks or months depending on, on who comes in, if anybody, so it's possible nobody does come in, but that was the reason why we were asking for two readings if you would be willing to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you all.
That concludes the resolutions. We have no ordinance this, this evening. Other discussion items, departmental updates. Are you department?
I am now.
Okay.
I just wanted to give all of city council an update on the city hall restoration, or city hall renovation project where we are restoring the exterior of city hall. We did do our bid opening and we, Schoolie Caldwell did make, make a recommendation to award the contract to Tradesman Group. The contract is $5,903,231. So I wanted to make you all aware of that. That does not include the elevator. Schoolie Caldwell decided to bid the elevator separate because it's two separate types of-
Specialties.
Specialties, thank you. Couldn't think of that word, thank you Auditor Nettles. So although we've awarded the contract for the Tradesman's Group, I wanted to let you know we will still be bidding out the elevator. They are working on finalizing those specs and that bid should go out here within the next two to three weeks. So Auditor Nettles got the note signed and we don't, we haven't had our meeting yet with the contractor to actually do, set all of the dates and the timelines, but we should have that shortly and as soon as I have that, I will be back with another update for you. So I'm open to any questions about city hall.
Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, excuse me, departmental updates? Tonight's meeting prep? Our new president?
That's me. I just wanna clarify, make sure we're all on the same page on 54-25. So we discussed four names earlier, so if we're voting yes, a yes vote is for those four names and a no vote is you don't like those names. So just so we're all on the same page, right? Not voting for them individually, as a group?
Correct, as a group.
Okay.
It's as the legislation, it's as the legislation is filled out.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows what they're voting for or who they're voting for, yes or no. That's all I had.
Very good. Any other thoughts? Tonight's meeting, or I'm sorry, other items for finance committee? I hear there's no need for an executive session and I would look for a motion to a-
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned, thank you.
Regular meeting of city council will be at 6:30 on the dot. Thank you.
Great Automotive Service is just around the corner at the Buckeye family of dealerships. Whether it's Buckeye Nissan in Hilliard, Georgesville Nissan at the Georgesville Auto Mall, Buckeye Honda of Lancaster, Buckeye Toyota of Lancaster, or Buckeye Collision Center in Hilliard. Team Buckeye services all makes and models at each location, utilizing modern practices with hundreds of years of experience, giving you peace of mind. That's how we Buckeye. The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematorium in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
All right, in the spirit of gentle reflection, I have something that if anyone knows what I've been going through lately, it makes a little bit of sense. But I think it's good advice for everyone. So never take anything or anyone for granted. Life is really unpredictable. We can hope, expect, have visions, but we really don't have that much of control. So just be grateful for everything and everyone because everything can change and be taken away in the blink of an eye. Everything is a blessing. Stay positive, be thankful. I'll call the meeting of Lancaster City Council order. You join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me call the roll, please.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mr. Bischak?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mrs. Hoop? Mr. Lochtenberg?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Solley?
Here.
Ms. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Wing?
Here.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Here.
I'll let the record reflect that all 10 members of city council are present. Reading and disposal of the journal.
A regular meeting minutes dated May 19th, 2025.
Mr. President, I, or did you have anything? Mr. President, I would like to accept the reading and disposing of the journal.
Second.
I'm supposed to be the one that's confused.
You have one job. You have one job tonight.
I didn't know whether it was a motion or not.
Did I do it right? We're doing it right.
Okay.
We're figuring it out. This is the comic version of city council meetings, so we're on the same page. All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the reading and disposal of the journal. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody not in favor? I'll get it right. Okay. Any reports of city officials?
I have email dated May 21st, 2025 regarding East Six Bridge right-of-way acquisition. Temporary ordinance 25-25 responded, or I'm sorry, submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall. Email dated May 27th, 2025 regarding Healthy Homes Production Grants Fund submitted by Grant Manager Michelle McCrady. Email dated May 27th, 2025 regarding Lancaster NCA Appointing Initial Board submitted by Law Director Hall. Email dated May 27th, 2025 responding to Law Director Hall. On Lancaster NCA Appointing Initial Board submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Email dated June 3rd, 2025 regarding a public records request for the city street levy submitted by President Porter. Email dated June 4th regarding, or 2025 regarding Ewing Woods LLC affidavit notice annexation petition filing submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall. Email dated June 6th, 2025 regarding the 20, June, June 26th Planning Commission submitted by City Planner Tazlin Carter. Email dated June 6th, 2025 regarding background information on legislation to be introduced to the June 9th. City Council meeting submitted by Stormwater Manager Steve Wallstead. Email dated June 8th, 2025 responding to Law Director Hall on Lancaster NCA Appointing Initial Board submitted by Mrs. Hoop. And then a walk-in of mail, June 20, June 9th, 2025 regarding completion of Sunshine Law submitted by Ms. Teener. And that's it.
Mr. President, I'd like council to accept the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have any communications?
I have one. I have mail dated June 6th, 2025 regarding, regarding Lancaster Carryout LLC liquor license 2025001 submitted by the Higher Division of Liquor Control.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept and file reports of, I'm sorry, of communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have any special presentations?
We have none this evening.
You don't have any petitions or memorials?
There are no petitions or memorials.
All right, now is the time that we set aside for voters and taxpayers to address council. Are there any, is anyone here to speak to council this evening? All right, so we want you to come up and you do have a clipboard to sign, so you're just going to state your name and address. And then you have three minutes to address council. Just so you know, you've been up here before, we won't answer any questions at this time, so feel free.
My name's Chuck Burgoon. I live at 346 Bovington Road. And thank you for allowing me to address the council again. I want to bring up, it's been all over social media of a couple of events that's potentially happening, happening in our city at, I believe it's Double Edge Brewing and at L-City. It's my understanding that it appears there's going to be two more drag shows. Once again, I want to bring to the attention of the council and the law director that we do have an ordinance that prevents these things. And for 40 years, our city has been protected from lion's den type thing, adult strip clubs and so on. And it's a valid law. It's still on the books and council has chose not to modify or change it. And under 707.05, in this ordinance, it says that if they want to have a sexually oriented type thing, they have to file for a license with the city. And I'm not sure that that's been done. So once again, I just want to impress upon the city that we have laws. If the laws are on the books, then they're valid and they must be enforced. Otherwise, it's a dereliction of your oath of office and duty. And with that, the one thing I want to leave, leave you with is, you know, the thing of it is, is, you know, we each have personal responsibilities and accountability. And if, and what I want to quote is from James 4:17. And what the scripture says is, says, "Therefore to him who knows to do good and does it not, to him it is sin." And so is everybody, each of us have to reflect in our own lives daily. If we see something that is not right, that is not wholesome, that does not fall within what we know is right and wrong, and we don't do anything about it, then our silence says that we're sinning. We're not doing what we're called to do. So with that, I'll leave you and once again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else want to address council this evening? No? All right, we're going to move on. Do we have any reports of standing committees?
I do. I have six. I have Finance Committee meeting minutes dated May 20th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Safety Committee meeting agenda dated June 5th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Bischak. Safety Committee meeting minutes dated June 6th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Bischak. Finance Committee agenda dated June 7th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Water Water Pollution Committee minutes dated May 29th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wing. And then Public Works Committee meeting minutes dated June 9th, 2025 submitted by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any reports of special committees?
There are no reports.
We don't have any public hearings that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to the reading of resolutions, starting with temporary resolution 4625.
A resolution to Lancaster's Physical Year 2025 Community Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Statement of Objectives to authorize, to authorize the mayor to submit the same to the U.S. Department in Housing and Urban Development. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Schoonover.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 46-25.
Second.
We have a first and a second to pass temporary resolution 4625. Any discussion?
Just a quick reminder, this is to approve the estimated allocation of about $488,000 from the CDBG program.
Anyone else? Call the roll?
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bischak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 4625 passes 10 to 0. Moving on to the second reading of resolutions, starting with temporary resolution 4925.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor in the General Fund 1001 for the one-time strategic community investment grants program and to declare an emergency. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Solley.
Mr. Wolfinger?
The second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 4925. Temporary resolution 5025.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to dispense with competitive bidding for a sole source provider contract for membrane replacement for the South Water Plant. This is through Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Mr. Wing?
This is also the second of three readings.
Second reading on temporary resolution 5025. Temporary resolution 5325.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and the .45 Police and Fire Levy 205, 2021 Fund 2051 and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the Fairfield County Auditor and to declare an emergency. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third readings of temporary resolution PP3-25.
Second.
Excuse me.
We have a motion and a second to suspend our rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 5325. Discussion?
No discussion.
No? Call the roll?
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bischak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 10 to 0. Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes, I'd like to make, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 53-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 5325. Discussion?
Yes, there is, please. This resolution authorizes Service Safety Director to enter into contract for $660,000 and account for contingencies for the fire department's building on East Main Street, engine house number two.
Anyone have any other discussion? Ms. Teener?
Yes, I want to do a little bit of background history. In February 2nd of 2024, we had a meeting, our safety meeting, and we were talking about medics. I'll say squads, because when you think of medics, I guess that's people, but a squad. And I asked the question, how many squads have we had since I've been on council? Since so, since 2016, we have had four new squads, we were told at that meeting. And I will read what Mr. Bischak wrote in the minutes. As far as vehicles go, for medics three and four, anticipated to be delivered in late summer, early fall. So mind you, this is 2024, and there will be a need for legislation to budget for a new truck for medic two. Now, I remember at that meeting, looking at Mr. Bischak, when they listed the amount of emergency squads that we had had since 2016. And I said to him, put that in the minutes. And then he let, let us know. And then I said, you know, I missed that with reading minutes. I noticed something that was left out unless I missed it. Lancaster Fire Department received one new medic in 2016, one medic in 2019, and two in 2023 and a new fire truck during COVID. And Mr. Bischak says, well, he says, thank you. I only wanted to note new items and we received recently or will receive soon. That being said, I appreciate the input. So that was never amended. So are you guys wanting new squads? You guys want to build a building over a half a million dollars to maintain vehicles? And these are pretty new vehicles. And you want a new firehouse because Kerry Woody, you know, we're looking at, on Edie Road and that. So are we getting new squads too? Are you guys wanting new ones on top of the building?
There's, I think a few questions there. One of, it's, what question do you have about the building behind Engine House 3?
Well, I mean, if you, you've got, I mean, are they warranted? I mean, I don't, you guys want to build a building for half a million dollars. But it also says here for last year in the minutes that early summer or fall of last year, there will be a need for legislative, well, that's a truck. Medics three and four anticipated to be delivered in late summer or early fall. And this is last year, 2024.
Correct. So the status of our fleet of EMS units, our frontline units, medic one is a 2016. I anticipate delivery in the next two months. It is being replaced. It was the most recent one that we ordered. Medics one, I'm sorry, medics four and three were replaced in 2023, so they're 2022 and a 2023 model. Medic two serving the West Side is a 2019 model and it's coming upon. Our goal is to replace them at roughly 16,000 engine hours, which is kind of the equivalent of 500,000 miles. That truck being on the farthest part of town tends to put more hours on the engine. All three stations average a different number of hours every year. So to put in perspective, right now, I don't have a spare fire truck or a spare medic because they're both in service. My reserve engine is having a head gasket. a head gasket replaced. Medic one is having an alternator replaced. So I don't have a medic five right now, and I wouldn't have an engine one to put in service because it's already being used as other frontline trucks are being maintained. The building we're requesting would consolidate all those resources into one area for a more quick deployment in a place that's more conducive for storage of our fire apparatus and giving us the facilities and the means to work on the trucks ourselves, which we've done, I think consistently, what we can do in-house for years, saving the city of quite a bit of money.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since you're up there, with this building, can you, as a fire department, because we are paying you for an on-demand service, can you provide the city of Lancaster a better service with the building being there?
Yes, this improves our response capabilities.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just say, I was involved in fleet maintenance for a number of years, and I would just say that I don't care how new the equipment is. You have to have a place to work on equipment. You have to keep your equipment up. I've seen brand-new equipment break down. And the fact that they want to do it, and they have the capability to do it, we need to give them a place to do it. And I think that that's reasonable.
Sorry. I also asked it to scale even half. Even, I even, I mean, threw that out there, you know, because instead of four bays, could you have two to scale it down? And not immediate, no, I mean, didn't even look into that.
I believe I answered that question. And yes, the building will be full at the end of 2026 with the reserve EMS units and the reserve fire apparatus and the new smoke all, I anticipate all four bays to already be full by the end of 2026.
I would like to have this put into record.
Any other discussion on this piece? No? So I will ask for roll call on the motion to pass.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
No.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one. It's all for second reading of resolutions. We're going to move on to first readings with temporary resolution 5425.
A resolution appointing four of the initial members to the board of the Lancaster New Committee Authority and declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution. What? Oh, shucks. Sorry. My bad. Scratch that.
I was doing something else myself, so I didn't even know you messed up, so. What are we doing?
Shame on you. No, we need to suspend. So I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 5425.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading. Discussion?
Nope.
Nope? Please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to zero. Mrs. Hoop?
Now, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 54-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution 5425. Discussion?
No, this is just, well, yeah, I guess this is just to appoint the four people to the NCA, and that was the four that we discussed in finance.
Any other discussion, questions?
Should we read the names?
I can do that. I have for the citizen members, Matt Nyheiser, Lyndee Jackson, Jan Kokosha, and then local government member would be Lisa McKenzie.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Motion, we have a motion to pass, please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 5425 passes with a vote of 10 to zero. Temporary resolution 5525.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Mark and Beth Powers of parcel numbers 014, 011, 2500, 014, 010, 1500, 014, 0104, 2000, and 014, 011, 2300, consisting of 143.319 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes, I would like, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary resolution 55-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second, third readings of temporary resolution 5525. Any discussion?
We talked about that with some finance, but this is just to enter into a pre-annexation agreement for the land in Greenfield Township.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes 10 to zero. Mrs. Hoop?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 55-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution 5525. Any additional discussion?
No.
Any questions, anyone? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 5525 passes 10 to zero. Temporary resolution 5625.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the storm water fund 6006 for payment of compensatory time. Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Mr. Wing?
Yes, this is the first of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution 5625. Temporary resolution 5725.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to dispense with a competitive bidding and enter into an agreement to purchase a Tai MCO Model 600 Street Sweeper from the state cooperative purchasing program for use by the storm water and transportation departments. This is through Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wing?
This is also the second of, excuse me, first of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution 5725. Do we have any other resolutions to come before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances with the third reading of temporary ordinance 2525.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to acquire the permanent and temporary right-of-way necessary for the East Sixth Avenue Bridge over Feder's Run Replacement Project. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mr. Lochtemberg.
Ms. Teener?
Miss, I can make the motion to replace first. Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to replace temporary ordinance 2525 with temporary ordinance 2525 star.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to replace temporary ordinance 2525 with the amended 2525 star. Discussion?
Not this time.
Any other? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to replace with star version passes 10 to zero. Ms. Teener?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the temporary record temporary ordinance 2525 star.
Second.
Motion to pass temporary ordinance 2525 star. Discussion?
Yes, this was just for a grant, and there was a sentence that was missing out of the grant request. So it's just a housekeeping item. They're putting a sentence in so we can hopefully get the grant, which looks like we will.
Is that right? Am I reading the wrong thing?
This, this piece, there is money, as Councilwoman Teener was saying, but the money needs to be spent on right-of-way and easement for the East Sixth Avenue Bridge Replacement. And so this version creates or gives the emergency language that's required in order to use that money faster in the process of easement and right-of-way acquisition.
All right, sorry, Ms. Teener, the grant thing threw me off.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Lochtemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Solley?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 2525 star passes 10 to zero. Moving on to the second reading of temporary ordinance 2625.
An ordinance to accept a petition for the annexation of .605 plus or minus acres in the Pleasant Township and to consent to annexation and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Mrs. Hoop?
This is second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance 2625. No first readings or ordinances? Do we have any other ordinances to come before council?
No, sir.
Seeing none, don't see any tabled legislation. Do we have any unfinished business? Anyone? Any new business anyone wants to discuss?
I would like to know, Stephanie, if you could answer Mr. Bagoon's question regarding the events that are possibly going to go on in L. City and Double Edge. Do they need permitting, or is it already done, or?
I don't know, to be honest. I haven't heard about either of these events, so I don't know anything about them. If there are permits to be, that would be required, those come through the Service Safety Director's office. I haven't seen anything with regard to either of those events. I get a copy as soon as they're filed with the Service Safety Director. So I can't speak to those, unfortunately.
Okay, I was just getting, and Carrie, you haven't seen any?
I will just echo that my office isn't aware of either of those events either.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I read these two other pieces? Or ask you to read those two pieces?
I have, I have new business. I have, there will be a public hearing on the Ewing Woods LLC zoning map amendment on July 14th, 2025. And then I also have that I received two notifications from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Lancaster Carryout LLC permit number 5001283.
Mr. President, can I address those, please?
Yep.
So the communications that were received were the standard letter and then new permit notification that we receive whenever there's a new permit issued within the city limits. When there is a new permit, the Lancaster Police Department gets information, sensitive information with regard to the ownership of that permit. Unfortunately, it did not get to LPD, so LPD was unable to share that with me. I reached out to the Division of Liquor Control, and they're going to resend that, but they couldn't resend it in time for tonight's meeting. So I would ask that somebody make a motion and that you all vote to delegate your ability to object to that new permit to the mayor. And I'm doing that because, you know, typically, there's no action that you need to take. You know, we rely on what the police department tells us in terms of what has happened at a business. But this business has absolutely no, no background, right, at the location that they're about to have a permit. And for those of you who don't know, it's the Lucky Shots Putt Putt is the listed address out on East Main Street, across the street there from Wendy's and Dairy Queen. You know, just want to take a look at what kind of business is going to be there, what's going to happen, how that's going to affect, you know, everything in the surrounding community. And again, we don't typically object to these, especially new ones, but it's always a good idea to know who is going to be running that business and whether or not there's any kind of criminal history that we should be aware of. So I would just ask you to delegate that authority to the mayor, because they said they can't have the information to us before the 23rd, which would give me time to formulate a response, whether, you know, to object or accept, depending on what that information says.
So we're looking for a motion?
Yes, a motion to delegate your authority to the mayor with regard to the new liquor permit.
Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to delegate our authority to the mayor on this particular matter.
You don't need to do a roll call. Yeah, voice vote will suffice.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign? No? Motion carries?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional new business? Ms. Teener?
Yes, this coming Saturday, June 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. downtown, there's going to be a Flag Day event. There will be proclamation read, historic speeches, reenactments, flag etiquette, canines, freedom never free be there, food vendors, and there's several sponsors, churches, businesses, and private individuals, Vietnam vets, AMVets, American Legion, and Veterans of Foreign Wars. So everybody's invited to come downtown Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 and celebrate our flags.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ask the? Yes, ma'am.
Because Becky brought it up, I will say, in preparation for Flag Day, we are going to be setting out a bunch of small flags along the sidewalk in the city's property this coming Wednesday afternoon at around 3:00 p.m. So if anyone is available and would like to help us set out about 100 flags, you are more than welcome to join us.
And everybody pray that it stops raining at some point in time this year.
We're in Ohio. We can handle it now.
More. Ridiculous. Okay, announcing the scheduled meetings, please.
Next regular meetings for council is June 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers. And then July 14th, 2025 at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers.
No special meetings scheduled, I see, and how about regularly scheduled committee meetings?
I have Public Works Committee at July 11th at 7:30 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room. Service Committee, June 13th at 8:00 a.m., City Hall 1897 Conference Room. And then Water Water Pollution Control Service Committee, June 13th at 9:00 a.m. July, I mean, I'm sorry, City Hall 1897 Conference Room.
Thank you. Reading of bills?
I have one for MNCO, and it's $123.84.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You can pay the bill.
Thank you.
We have no need for executive session that I am aware of. And before I ask for a motion to adjourn, thank you for your patience, and we made it through and nothing caught on fire. So, motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks for coming, everyone.
It was 37.